All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with that council meeting. We're gonna ask Councilwoman Ms. Harris to give us our prayer for the day.
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just wanna thank you, Lord, for another day. You've been so good, you've been so kind. Lord, we lift you up high. We bless your holy name this afternoon, oh God. First of all, we wanna thank you, Lord. You've been so good to us in West Memphis, oh God. Oh, we lift you up in West Memphis, oh God. Where you brought us through, where you brought us to, and where you gonna take us to, oh God. We bless your holy name right now. We give you glory this evening. We give you honor, and we give you praise, 'cause it's all belong to you that we live and move and have our being. And Lord, you look on the Cat family as they go through, God. Look on the Johnson family, Lord. Lord, you look on every family that it is, oh God. Look on the Turner family. Lord, we thank you. Hallelujah. We thank you this afternoon. Look on our mayor. Continue to give him strength. Continue to let him follow the vision that you give him, oh God. Rock him up in your loving arms and rock him, oh God. Cover us with your blood. Lift us with your love. Let us be a unit, God, that can bind together with understanding and love. Lord, you cover us, you lift us, and you encourage each and everyone that sits on this floor, oh God. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Let's continue to stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I'm gonna go ahead and start this meeting. Mr. City Clerk, will you call the row?
President. City Attorney Stevenson, here. City Treasurer Sutter. Councilmember Cat. Councilmember Crone, here. Councilmember Harris, here. Councilmember Hope, here. Councilmember Hutchinson.
Uh, no, I think so.
Councilmember Muhammad.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. So Ms. Hutchinson, she said she's gonna be around here. Is anyone on Zoom?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay, okay. Seven out of nine present, ma'am.
Well, seven out of nine present. I did speak with Ms. Hutchinson, and she was under the weather, and spoke with Mr. Cat, who has his brother-in-law, Prendergast, today, so he was family. We'll start now. We're gonna go to bed. Was there any other corrections to the minutes? I spoke with Councilman Murray, and Mr. Clerk, I would give you on those corrections to the minutes. Just one more correction that Mr. Murray had. Now, we're talking about the minutes. Mr. Murray found one correction that needed to be made in the minutes, and I give you on that correction. Were there any other corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes with the correction that was made by Council person Murray.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Those minutes are approved. Then get to our old business. Mr. City Attorney?
This third reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts, and for other purposes.
Hearing the red for the third time. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
I make a motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That's approved. That's our mosquito spraying vector who we've been using. Mr. City Clerk, will you get that ordinance and number?
Twenty-five seventy-two.
That's twenty-five seventy-two. City Attorney, third reading?
All right. This third reading of an ordinance authorizing the senior deputy city clerk to attest the mayor's signature when he has received written communication from the elected city clerk, and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
Right, hold on. There was an amendment that was talked about before, and I'm not sure. That was something that this ordinance was one, I think, sponsored by Tracy Cat, and there was gonna be an amendment to it. I've made the amendment that I think that was wanted, which was, and I say I've made it, I've made another ordinance. I've prepared another ordinance that has the amendment in it. And the amendment has to do with incapacity. It added incapacity as well as unavailability.
I get a motion and second to add that amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. So, we got a motion and second to approve. Was there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Will you get that ordinance and number as well?
Twenty-five seventy-three.
All right. Ms. Muhammad, will you do me the honor of R1 and O1?
Yes, I will give you that honor. I make a motion that reread R1 and O1 by title only.
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Attorney, R1?
Thank you. A resolution to distribute Southland Casino Racing Charity Day proceeds by elected officials of the city of West Memphis, as provided by law, and for other purposes.
I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion.
Is this for the Boys and Girls Club, or is this for everybody?
No, this is the money that was usually divided between the mayor and the council.
And the council.
But I think passing this, this is to add the city attorney, city treasurer, and the city clerk to this.
That will not go in effect until a month from now, is that right? So will this particular charity day money be a part of their contributions, or will it wait until the next charity day contribution, since this law really isn't in effect as of right now?
I would think that it will have to go to the next one, because some of the council members have used all their portion up for this, the money that we just currently got.
And this is a resolution anyway. It's not a...
Yeah, that's right. It's a resolution. I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. I know better.
Well, dude, may I say? May I speak?
Sure.
Well, this mean that other clerk and other city attorney...
And treasurer.
They get a piece of this to... We've been doing this ever since I've been on here, and that's been, what, thirteen years? And, you know, if anybody know me, know I always donate all of mine in the water I represent. And it's gonna really cut back on that. I don't see it going that way.
I mean, it's already passed.
It's gonna really cut back, because I, you know, I donate one time to the Boys Club, one time to the Girls Club. So that just, it's gonna really cut back on what I get to, this first to the Boys and Girls Club. And I just want, it's just me looking. I'm against it.
If I must say something, City Attorney, to the extent that it matters, I don't really care that I have a division of it. I think we just add it all elected officials, because it made it easier than excluding certain ones. But to the extent that it matters, I'll donate mine back to everybody, if that makes a difference.
Hearing none. Now, Mr. City Clerk, will you call the row?
Okay. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
No.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Uh, may it's gonna be?
Five yeses and two noes?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the motion fails. City Attorney, O1?
O1 is an ordinance to amend Section 3 Employment, subtitle Jury Duty of the Employee Handbook of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Well, this on the agenda for the first reading. It'll be back in a couple of weeks for a second reading. You all hear Ms. Coleman and why she wanted to do this. So, did you all wanna read the second time, or you wanna just wait two weeks?
Let's reach, make both reach second time.
Okay. I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Attorney, you read it for the second time?
An ordinance to amend Section 3 Employment, subtitle Jury Duty of the Employee Handbook of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
It's ready for a second time. It'll be back in two weeks for its final reading. If you all have any questions from now, please make sure you contact Ms. Coleman for any concerns. I hear no permission request. Committee reports far?
Here, the fire, Ms. Harris.
Oh, sorry. The city of West Memphis Fire Department met on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021, at 12:00 PM at the city hall. Those present was Councilwoman Harris, Cat, Crone, Murray, and Fire Chief Barrett Ely, and EMS Director Chief Derek Clay. The EMS Director Derek Clay provides the department update. New hires, resignation, promotion, and vacancy. There were two new hires, two single role paramedics, and six firefighters hired. Currently, there is one fire inspector position, three firefighters, paramedic position, and two single role paramedic position open. Retirement. There were three uniformed personnel that retired effective March 9th, 2021. The PPE. All persons protected equipment has been ordered for 2021. The vehicle maintenance. The new engine setting is here and is being housed at Station 2, waiting to place in rotation. Appears comfortable. Billing maintenance. Station number three is completed. They will be moving in by the end of the week. They are still waiting on station number two funds to be delivered. Training. They had one firefighter to graduate on March 12th. There are three firefighters attending firefighting school, and three firefighters attending higher learning classes. EMS. EMS call for 2021 with 975, and the EMS collection year to date is $82,017.86. Chief Clay said if they continue to run with the three units, they have the potential to be in, to bring in up to $700,000 in revenue. Chief Clay said they are still having to turn calls over to private company, and there is a definite need for more units. But there was no new business to report this period. Fire Chief Barrett Ely explained the operational change request. New operational change request. Old business discussed was the new sick leave guideline, eligible overtime guidelines, and new rank structure. Chief Barrett discussed the biggest issue in the fire department was overtime. Then Chief Ely passed out a report that showed how much overtime was paid out in January. During the first pay period, they paid $22,807. During the second pay period, they paid out $31,000 in overtime in a two-week period. Chief Ely said the reason for overtime was because of staff calling in sick or attending training and having to use firefighters to assist the ambulance service. Chief Ely said that he has presented a new sick leave policy to the city attorney for him to renew, to review. He is proposing that they hire part-time single roles EMT to ride on ambulance. There would be no additional expense for training, since they will already be EMT certified. They would not need to purchase turnout gear, because they would not be fighting fires. They will allow him to keep the firefighters on the truck. He would also like to start a junior firefighter program. They have spoken with the high school, and they have an EMT program being offered through ASU Mid-South. Chief Ely said the students will ride along on the ambulance with the EMT, thus freeing up the firefighters. Chief Ely said it would be an incentive to become certified EMT with the possibility of purchasing a career, pursuing a career with the West Memphis Fire Department after they graduated from high school. Chief Ely said that it would be cost-saving. They hire six part-time single role paramedic versus six full-time firefighters, as well as they would get more manpower, and it would be more efficiency, as well as reduce the cost of overtime. Chief Ely said ASU Mid-South would provide the instruction, and half million dollars previously spent on overtime would be used to pay for the position. Chief Ely said this would be a win-win situation for everyone. The benefits would be, they would be saving money in overtime, motivating local youths to become certified EMT with the potential to have their work for the city of West Memphis upon their graduation. They would not have to spend money training then, because they would already be certified, but the city would be investing in our local youth and city. And that's, that is it for...
I have a question.
And I think that is a really good program they're trying to get started with the youth. I think it would cut down a lot of crime to get them involved, to get them interested in something. They put them, they already have that ability, if they go on to school and get in this program, so they can be certified to go work on the fire, to work for the fire department.
Lorraine Muhammad, I have two comments. Very beautiful report. Very well done, City Councilwoman Harris. We were talking about, she mentioned in her report that the station number is at, that's three, is going to be vacated by the end of the month, or the end of the week. Remember when the pastor came asking about that particular station? Are we anywhere on that? I spoke to city attorney about it briefly. Are we anywhere on that, or do we need to talk privately about it?
Well, I talked to Pastor Banks this week. Was it this week, or a lot of weeks run it together, seems like. But I think I talked to him this week. Yeah, it was last week, actually. And I think the council probably needs to give some direction, what they wanna do with that property. I don't think that there was necessarily a decision made whether that property was to be sold, or what. And that's fine, whatever the council decides to do. I think he's still waiting to get something back from the Department of Health, is what he told me. I gave him a couple of options, which I can go into detail later. It was similar to what we had done previously.
Right.
And, you know, I'm not sure which way we're gonna go yet. But yeah, yes, ma'am, I have spoken to him.
All right, thank you so much.
And so, we, he actually, we had another meeting. He's on the Public Facilities Board, and during that meeting, we talked a little bit, and then he called me later on, and I told him, just give me a call. So he'll be getting back in touch with me, and I'll be happy to help anywhere I can.
I hope and pray that everything works out in his favor, because that is an idyllic place for him to have his program. It's right across from his church. There are a lot of area youth in the community, and it would be wonderful, but God's will prevail. And number two, as far as the young people going to paramedic school, EMT, EMS school, I think that is really something grand. My only question I have is, as far as liability, what would be the age? Would they be seniors, or what would be the age group?
Yes, ma'am. We have eighteen years old, people come off of high form, and we could get them right out of high school after they graduate, and they could have their certification certificate of diploma, and they could join the fire department, eighteen.
Right, I know, but as far as riding on the truck during their training, the liability factor, what would be the age group of the ones riding on the truck when they're actually in training?
Well, they won't be in training. They will be a certified EMT when they come up, okay?
Oh, okay.
They're not training. They'll be a certified EMT. They can get that with the program they offer at ASU.
I thought I misunderstood. I thought I heard her say that. They would get some training.
ASU and...
When they finish their training.
...have a program.
Right.
And when they graduate, they get the program. They can be at high school with diploma, and a certification.
Right.
That certification will allow them to be able to drive the ambulance without any training. Your training will already be given. But that's the money on training, because they already training.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, I have nothing else. Yeah, that'd be great. I'm done. Thank you.
Public Works?
Mayor, while I've got the floor, I'm gonna go ahead and report on all three committees that I chair.
Sure.
Public Works, we met on, this is March the 2nd, minutes, and the one thing that was brought up was the Service Road on the south side of the interstate from Missouri Street to Mount City, that when Chris contractors went in and they milled it down, and then we had that snow in those sub-temperatures, sub-freezing temperatures for ten days, the road was extremely rough to drive down, and it was very difficult to even hold your steering in the road. But when we met on the 2nd, we talked to Ms. Amanda Hicks, and she had hard on, I guess, contact Chris. Chris came back out and milled it down again, and put some asphalt down before the entrances of the interstate. And since they've done that, that particular section of interstate has been really smoothed out. I mean, it's real smooth now, so that's a good deal. Mr. Bonner, thank the guys with the Street Department, Chris Contractors, for helping clear the streets during the snowfall. And in the South Loop, the right-of-way process has started. The contractors gathering property owner information to proceed with proposals of obtaining the right-of-ways for the South Loop. Qualifications for construction engineering and inspection services have been published. And the 10-mile Bio Project, the submitted, the city submitted 60% to ADOT to help pay for that, and they've received some feedback. But they're seeking more CMAQ funding to complete the 3.8-mile project. Lear Street Bridge, there's, you know, that bridge has been out for a while. There's been some, not that bridge, I'm sorry. I was talking about the Reading Street. Lear Street Bridge, they've run into some right-of-way issues, and they're being worked on those now, so they should get those worked out, and then that project will proceed. The Reading Street Bridge, there's been some scuttling, some talk about changing it, this bridge to a, from a vehicle-type bridge to a pedestrian-type bridge for bicycle crossing. This will require a public community forum, and we're asking for any feedback, mostly from Ward 3, because Ward 3 is where the bridge is located. The Ridge Road Bridge, the MPO has allocated some infrastructure funding for its replacement. And the Code Enforcement Report, George Phillips, didn't have a really good week because of the bad weather, a really good month. And John Rick, who was attending our meeting, had mentioned something about a trash pile at 21st Oak, and George had already addressed that before the meeting started, so that took care of that, and then the meeting was adjourned. This is the conclusion of the utility report. The West Memphis Chamber of Commerce report, they met on March the 10th. They established the West Memphis Chamber Foundation in order to seek grant funding for community development projects. First event of the year will be an outdoor crawfish boil on April the 17th at Meadowbrook Country Club. Tickets are available at the Chamber now. The Chamber will also help with the ribbon cutting scheduled for Thursday and Friday. And that concludes the Chamber of Commerce report. The West Memphis Utility Commission report, we met on March the 11th. Safety Director Brett Sims reported that there was 121 days since the last recordable injury, and 505 days since the last lost time injury. There were no new hires or resignations for the month of February. The utility currently has 12 opening positions out of 83 budgeted positions. Financial update for the year ending 2020, utility showed an operational revenue of $26,434. And the operational expense was $26,351, so it's basically a break-even, even though there's about an $83,000 profit there. Commissioners agreed only to pass along, because the utility bills, this is another issue we talked about, the utility bills, for the 10-day duration of that sub-freezing weather, the utility bills are gonna be increased because of the consumption of the energy. So commissioners agreed only to pass along the $60,000 of the $750,000 in February to help customers with the higher bills. They also requested an insert be put into the March billing explaining the utility bills would be higher for the next three months. They thought it spread it out over a three-month period, rather than hit our citizens all at one time with a high bill. The, we talked a little bit about the potential power purchase agreement. The customer request, we had a, Mr. James Pulliam came down and discussed two items with the commission, and the commission agreed to review those two items. And then Ward Wembish talked about the update on wastewater projects that were incurred in 2020, and those coming up in 2021. And with that, the notice that's gonna be in the utility bills is gonna be like this, and I can read it if you want me to read this. But there will be a notice in the utility bills showing that what's going on with the utility bills over this high utility consumption we had during those 10 days. Would anybody like for me to read the notice?
I would like to hear it.
Okay. Due to extreme temperatures experienced during the month of February, your usage will be higher than normal, and our cost of purchasing electricity will be higher than normal. So we are only passing along the $60,000 average for February for the prior, from the prior three years, of the $750,000 in the month of February. The remaining balance will be spread out over the next few months to help your monthly bills. That's what's gonna be in the, in the, the next utility bills coming up.
I'm gonna ask you a question. Councilwoman Harris speaking. Are they gonna really calculate those bills right? Because they sent me one for $9,000 in January. So are they gonna have somebody to calculate them right?
I do not see our GM here for utilities, and I would not feel right about answering that question.
Well, Councilman Crone, if Ms. Harris for $9,000, I'm just gonna pass my ass over to you, because you can pay $9,000 for 100.
I asked him, was it a private joke?
I would, Councilperson Harris, if I were you, I would call, contact the GM, Todd Peterson.
Oh, I did?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did.
And what was his response?
They laughed. Said it was a mistake. I said, I know it's a mistake, but I just wanna know who made it.
Well, I was, I got my utility bill, and I was, you know, I'm a little bit frugal with things, so mine was, I think it was like $174 for the month of February.
Yeah, they really did. How can a little, small place use $3,000 of a what?
Thank you, Ms. Harris. And the mayor, that concludes those three reports.
All right, we didn't have any other commissions, but I just wanna double-check. No other committee? I know personnel met, but Councilwoman Hutchinson's not in, so I'm not overlooking any. Police, police didn't meet today?
We have not met. We have not met.
Okay, okay.
It's me this time.
All right, well, the second item of business that I have is the appointments. You know, last week, two, a couple of weeks ago when I talked with Todd, we thought that we had two commissioners open at that time and, and I think we still do possibly, but one of the commissioners having officially resigned, but he hasn't been able to be active at the meetings at this point. So we're saying that we only have one and I think I spoke with some of the council people and I don't wanna be out of line, but they wanted me to make the motion that you yourself, Edward Smith. Someone that Ms. Muhammad recommended to us.
I'll make the motion.
So.
I make the motion that we accept Mr. Elder Smith as Commissioner to the West Memphis Utility.
I'll say a new motion.
Okay. We got, Mr. Club, you got the second? Did you get the second? The motion, second? And Mr. Murray, second. Are there any other discussion to go along with this? Well, I hear none. Ms. Clerk, call it wrong.
Uh, yes.
I'm Ms. Muhammad.
Yes.
I'm Ms. Monday.
Yes.
I'm Ms. Murray.
Yes.
I'm Ms. Willis.
Yes.
Six yeses. We got seven yeses that are. I hit Mark, you know, since you didn't say anything. Okay, okay. Well, seven yeses. Mr. Edward Smith is now elected to the Utility Commission. Right now, we're gonna wait to see what's gonna happen with Mr. Bruce. Like I said, Mr. Bruce having currently been at the meeting and Todd and others are working to see what that situation is. And once it come available, we'll move forward with Mr. Felton, Mr. replacement for that position. If everyone is in agreement, just counsel, whatever, just counsel by the field.
Ms. Muhammad speaking. So I'll advise on Mr. Smith that, that he has been appointed and from here he'll contact the general manager about the meetings and things of that nature. So I'll, I'll let him know.
Anything else on appointments?
Mayor, excuse me, going back to what we were just talking about here. Will someone notify Hal Felton and let him know what's going on so that when that seat comes available?
Sure, sure. Actually, I would contact Todd, cause I'm sure that a decision probably need to be made pretty quickly with, with Mr. Bruce. I like Mr. Bruce, but he's not able to attend the meetings, have currently haven't attended the meetings, so. Mr. Monday?
Yes, uh, hell, as a friend of mine, I'll contact him and talk to him.
Okay.
In the beginning, I was supporting him, but he wasn't in Ward, I thought he was gonna be on Ward 4. I thought it was gonna be Ward 5. And I do, I was, I had told the mayor and several others that I was gonna support him.
Okay.
But we needed Edward out of Ward 4.
That's, I understand, I understand. I just wanna make sure that, that he's not left out in the cold that we tell him something. Yep.
Mr. Crum, I elect you to do that.
Do what?
I elect you to do that.
We've already got a volunteer.
You can handle that better than he could.
We're gonna move on to presentations. The first presentation we have would be Director Dwayne Rose. Will you come for it, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. A challenge coin is a, a token of appreciation that is handed out for a job well done. History that the tradition could have possibly began in the ancient Roman era. And during this time, if a soldier performed well in battle, he was awarded a typical day's pay and then he was awarded a single coin as a bonus. Some accounts state that the coin was specially minted with the mark of the legion from which it came from, prompting some men to save their coins instead of spending it. Mayor McClendon, for your foresight in creating the Office of Emergency Management for understanding the preparedness needs of the city of West Memphis, I would like to present to you the very first City of West Memphis Office of Emergency Management Challenge Coin. I hope you will carry this coin with you and know you are making a difference in the safety and well-being of every citizen we serve.
This is the part, definitely. I didn't know what the presentation was, but I think you were, I think I could do that show some more. And I gave, uh, great results in position. I know sometimes maybe like once in position, you know, how work to do. As soon as I gave you, we had an ice storm, but you go right and talk bad night. By the time I called, it's a couple of two, three, four, trying to make it home. All of us have more work we need to do and he does one great job, so I want to thank him.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, can I say one thing? Director Rose, you know, I just, the other day, just learned that I've been knowing him ever since he's about, what, eight, nine? He was talking the other day and I looked at him, I said, wait a minute. I said, your voice sounds familiar to me. He said, yeah. He looked at me, I said, wait, let me, Rose. Then it, 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 I know me. I said, what's your father's name? He told me Carlton Rose. I worked with his daddy for at least about 10, 12 years. And he used to be a little bitty boy, riding the car with his daddy all the time and I just figured it out. I just figured it out the other, last week. We were standing there talking and I realized that voice, but he come from a good strong background.
Like I said, I can't thank him enough and for the citizens of West Memphis, cause I do wanna throw this out real quick. You know, right before the snowstorm, we had like 177 cases of COVID-19. I'm so proud and honored that today, once I got the number, we only have 15 cases here in Creney County. And what Director Rose and many of the other departments here within the city with the vaccination clinics that we have had, I mean, I know it worked smoothly. Anyone that came being seen how smoothly it did work, but it was a lot of work that these, that individual and other people who are in the city and volunteers that came together to make their work for our citizens. So once again, I would say thank him and thank the citizens of West Memphis and the volunteers. All right, I got another presentation that I think is, is, is sort of fun because when I look at my daughters, I look and say, hey, I believe they can be anything that they wanna be. And this time, you know, I think this Women's Month. So we got a great presentation that's about to happen right now, so I'm gonna turn it over to Joe and we gonna go from there.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand. City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for your Lady Blue Devils. Harmony Buckingham. Janaya Burnett. Janisha Clark. Kayla Hudson. Kayla Hudson. Terrica Enman. Amanda McCrure. Camisha Cricket. Anaya Price. Aleah Taylor. Nia Taylor. And Janaya Tucker. Ladies and gentlemen, these are your Lady Blue Devils.
I'm so honored to be standing amongst these young ladies right here because did you all know this Saturday at 4 o'clock at Hot Springs, Arkansas, they'll be competing for the 5A championship? When I tell you that our city is on a winning streak, it's not just with the city. I think this has rubbed off on everyone. Everyone just doing anything within the city. And I will be in Hot Springs with my face painted up, probably making a fool out of myself, but I'll be showing you all love and support. These young ladies are playing hard and I'm so thankful that they're representing our city. We love our Blue Devils and our Lady Blue Devils, we wanna show you the same support and love. So I have something that I definitely wanna give to you all. Now, I'll tell you something, we, these young ladies have a great coach. Would she come forth with me, please? Coach Leaks. Nigga, I told you I probably just came to that, uh. Talk to Coach. How you doing?
Good. We have a community recognition to the Academies of the West Memphis Lady Blue Devils.
As Mayor and on behalf of the City of West Memphis, I am honored to recognize the Academies of West Memphis Lady Blue Devils and ask the community to rally, to rally together and wish them the best as they head to Hot Springs for the 5A Arkansas State Championship Game on March 20th, 2021, to continue West Memphis winning streak. All seats to the Lady Devils. Hard work, energy, both on the court and in the classroom has been inspiring and earned them a well-deserved place in the 5A State Championship Game. The excellence these students strive to achieve in athletics and academics makes West Memphis proud. We commend head coach, Mr. Erica Leak, assistant coach, Nikia Gotti, and assistant coach Kramer Brown, as well as Kwame Brown, sorry, for the tremendous hard work, determination, and perseverance of these players on achieving this outstanding accomplishment. So congratulations on your success and we wish you best of luck as you continue West Memphis winning streak through sports and academics. Now therefore, I, Marco McClendon, Mayor of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, do proclaim here formally to us a great send-off to the Lady Blue Devils to the 5A State Championship Game and urge all citizens of West Memphis and Arkansas to give special recognition to the great Lady Blue Devils if we will, now I can say it, but we will win the 5A State Championship.
Coach Leaks.
Uh, Coach Brown is here too. Come on up, Coach. We would like to thank the City of West Memphis, Mayor McClendon. Thank you so much for this huge honor. It does not go unnoticed. The Lady Blue Devils are ready. They have fought hard this year, fought through many adversities. But this is the smartest team I've ever coached. I mean, we're looking at a 3.8 average GPA. And so they're, they're getting it right on and off the court and thank you for your support. And we're gonna represent our schools, our family, and our community come Saturday. Works up.
With them, but I just so proud of the Lady Blue Devils. I watched them play. They, this is a great team. I look forward to what they're doing. And some people probably doubted them and didn't think they would get here, but I'm sure when you're keeping God first, working hard, listening to your coaching staff, you can make things happen. I truly believe that West Memphis can do all things through Christ who strengthened us.
Okay, macro, make sure your face is in the shoulder gap for us. I'll send all y'all smiles come right through the mask, let's do it.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and continue our meeting so we can get ready to adjourn. Hey, Willis, we not, we haven't adjourned. Don't leave yet. We got announcements. Anyone having announcements?
No.
Well. Okay. Sure. Also, I want to say on behalf of the City of West Memphis, Kenneth Johnson means a lot to us. And I know since I've been coming in, I just don't call the people who work for this administration employees. I call them our city family members. So when my brother hurts, I hurt because we as a family, we support one another and he's, he's a good, he's just a good guy, period. If you know Kenneth. And I just want you all to keep his family in him in your prayers. I mean, I knew his mom. I had many conversations with her. She prayed with me, gave me advice, straightened me up when I needed to be straightened up. But Ms. Katie was a great queen. And I just wanna make sure that his family get all the support and love that they need. She's a great woman. She did everything. She was a mother to many people. She probably didn't actually birth them, but she was a mother to that whole community, especially Sunset and everywhere they come from. So my prayers also go out to his brothers and sisters, but definitely as our family members, I ask that we definitely keep Kenneth lifted up in our prayers and, and pray for a speedy recovery for us he heal from, cause that was his heart, truly was his heart, his mom. Also, the funeral will be this Saturday at 12 o'clock at Kingdom Secrets on Broadway. Actually, the wake is from 11 to 12, so if you just wanted to go by and show your support, it would be from 11 to 12. The funeral starts at 12. Also, I want you all to keep Brother Beach, our police chaplain in your prayers. He lost his wife today. Ms. Marty Beach, she passed away today, so definitely he's been probably our longest-serving volunteer police officer, chaplain, and for our chaplain for a long time, so definitely I ask you all to keep that family prayed up and lifted up as well. I wanna give you all, I got with Tracy, I got with Tori. Actually, when Tori called me, I got a little nervous because she was coming to bring me these year-end numbers. I also confirmed with the city treasurer. Under this administration, this council approved a $21,433,406 budget. This administration only spent $20,763,951 of that budget. This administration only spent twenty million, seven hundred sixty-three, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars of that budget. But the great part about it is that this budget generated twenty-four million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. So under this administration, during a pandemic year, once again, a pandemic year, the general fund generated a two million, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and four hundred and twelve cent profit for the year twenty twenty. Now that deserves a round of applause, I'm sorry. And after debt repayment and, uh, debt repayment and capital improvement that you all have approved, once you clear that, out of that two-point-seven million, we still clear one-point-one million dollars. So I mean, they do that in a pandemic year where most people, um, businesses are shinned down, some people not working. They go to show you, if that's not responsible, financial responsibility with a budget in this administration, I don't know what is. And I hope we all join together to move that forward and continue this pace. Now, Ms. Muhammad and, uh, Ms. Harris, I want to let you all know something. Today, we had a great library opening. How many of you all sent the new library? It's something that you can cheer for and be proud of here in West Memphis. But Ms. Muhammad, Ms. Harris, the encouraging words and supports and love that y'all showed me, I want y'all to know, I really appreciate that. I, I needed that, the love that these two women right here came to me and showed me, and what we're going to do in the future, it, it meant so much because sometimes the expectation that I have get as mayor is totally different, I think, than any other mayor that probably been in this seat before. And I thank you all for the love and support. I mean, Ms. Muhammad, you've been raising me for years, you know. Yeah, Ms. Harris, you've been praying for me when I did, but I was one foolish enough not to pray for myself. You've been doing it, and I thank you all. And I just want you all to know that I really appreciate that, and that meant a lot for me. That, you know, I may walk around with the biggest smile on my face, but sometimes people just understand that I'm hurting crying inside. And what y'all did for me today, it really meant so much. Also, I want to work as a family with this council. We may not always agree with each other. We may have differences of opinion, but for everyone standing at this table, let's work together because West Memphis is, is in the right direction. So many great things are going on in this city. We got another big grand opening next week with a fantastic courthouse. We got another grand, uh, grand opening coming with a new fire department. There's so many different things that are happening. Our par, I have now relaunched our parish project that we passed that South is going to pay for because money is being generated now so that we can start to move our city forward and people can be proud. I was a little hurried and disappointed with Crum when I found out that the possibility of we trying to repeal the tax, but just look at where we going, and I, I want to sit down and, and extend an olive branch to you and work closely with you so we can work together to make sure that we're on the same page to move the city forward. Um, I thank you all for your support and what you doing for me, and, and let's make this thing happen. Let's make West Memphis be the city that we know that it can be. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor. Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
All right. I've been on this council for a lot of years. Even with the pandemic last year, we did more here in this city than we have in the last nineteen years as far as the growth, as far as building. And I think that has to do with all of us, with all council, mayor, and all the, uh, staff. It takes all of us. If we keep doing it this way, West Memphis will be very much on the map. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Mayor. Did you say, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the increase in the, in the, uh, percentage, the one percent is being re, what now?
Repealed.
Well.
It's been repealed?
Not yet. I mean, just the possibility, talks of it, but you know.
I, I, it's, it's hard for me to understand why the people that's on the, uh, committee voted for it. I mean, they, they own the hotels, and they own the restaurants, and they run the restaurants. They the ones that voted for it, and that's why we brought it to the council. And they own the hotels and own, they the ones that wanted it. And I, and I can't understand why it's, it's being repealed, and these are the people that own, own the things. I'm talking about, they the ones that, that want it. And, uh, uh, you know, however, we got to fight it to get it, that's what we got to do, because I'm fully in the seat. I'm totally for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, Mr. Crum.
Councilman Monday, the A and P Commission did not vote to raise the tax. What they did was, they voted to say that if the mayor could get the council to raise the tax, approved, then we would do it. That's what was said.
Okay. If that's what you say.
All you got to do is go back, all you got to do is go back and look at the tape. Look, look, review the tape.
Uh, hold, hold, hold on a moment. Yeah.
Now, as far as, uh, my concerns about the A and P tax, yeah, I'm concerned about it. I was concerned about it, still am concerned about it. But it was approved, and we deal with it. But I think that everybody should know that there is a, a recall procedure and a process that's out there if they don't agree with something. If they think it's, if they think it's too, uh, difficult for them to accept it, there is a process, you know. I'm, I'm not saying that that process is in the works or that process is even going to happen, but there is a process out there for, for citizens or voters to follow. And, you know, I'm just going to repeat some words that you told me one day. It's, it's only politics. It's only politics. I mean, I got my beliefs. Everybody in this room's got their own beliefs. And, uh, you know, it's, it's okay to disagree. It's okay to agree. It's okay to disagree. I mean, the bottom line is, it's the city of West Memphis, and there's citizens and voters that we're talking about, not just me or anybody else.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say one thing, if you don't mind. I've dealt with the public in this county for over fifty years of my life. They weren't happy at all.
Well, I mean, the taxpayers and I, I talked to the peoples on their body and, and, and I, and Mike Patel, I talked to him, and if you can name one person that owned more hotels than Mike Patel in the city, I'd be quiet. But it's neither here or there at this point. It has passed. It is a, it is a procedure, but I have learned for me, it is politics, but right now, I love this city so much. If doing the right thing for this city calls me the mayor's seat in another two years, I have. I'm going to do what I feel the people gave me the power to do now, and I'm going to start working on what's right for the city.
Agreed.
Amen.
Al, also, before we go, uh, I got counsel, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, but I got to say one thing. Our next city council meeting will be at, back in the council chambers due to its, uh, vaccination here. And it'll be a conflict with us using it with the vaccination going on, so we will be meeting at our, uh, council chambers at our next meeting. Mr. Clerk?
I want to say something pretty quick. Actually, this is in reference to the revolution that we had on today, so we can have a good understanding. First of all, you know, when, uh, that law was passed, it said elected officials. It didn't say city council. It didn't say mayor. It didn't say clerk. It said elected official. What happened back some time ago, the city council was the only somebody that was getting those tickets. Then Mayor Johnson asked to be added to the list, because we don't even have an ordinance for anything the way we do it. Now, again, see, the attorney made, you know, he's made his remark. I haven't heard the treasurer say anything, but I like to see it broke down, and I'm act, I'm asking as an elected official, because everybody here give it to the charity of their choice. So I feel being elected official, I have that same choice.
Uh, if there's anything else, can I get a motion and second to adjourn? Second, up, up, up?